Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Board of Trustees to order on October 13th, 7:35 PM. We have the roll please.
So is President Torby.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Calhoun.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford is absent. Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall is absent. Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Calhoun, Chief, present. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the present accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in the Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Calhoun, Chief, Village Clerk.
Thank you. We have one resolution to begin to go into executive session.
Resolution authorizing an executive session at the October 13th, 2014 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. The matters to be discussed in executive session are the Luddington, Brooke and related issues, which is attorney-client privilege; fire department personnel and contract negotiations; redevelopment opportunities, which is contract negotiations and attorney-client privilege; East Orange Water Commission, which is litigation, contract negotiations and attorney-client privilege; New Jersey American Water, which is contract negotiations and attorney-client privilege; JAC, which is litigation, contract negotiations and attorney-client privilege; and the PBA and FMBA, both of which are litigation, contract negotiations and attorney-client privilege. Have a motion please?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Calhoun. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Thank you, we'll be back here at 8:00.
Okay, thank you everybody. Sorry for our delay getting back out. I would like to call this meeting back to order. Could we have the roll please?
Village President Torby.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
We'll be right back.
Absent. Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present.
If you're looking for Steve, he's not back there.
Thank you. Ah, Steve Schnall is here. Uh, please rise. Oh no.
There's a flag pullback there.
Alright, so we're gonna...
Let's go this way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, two quick announcements tonight. Essex County Computer and Electronics Recycling Day, Saturday, October 18th, and that's from 9:00 to 3:00 PM. And that's in Cedar Grove at 125 Fairview Ave. If you've got any computer or electronics, you can go there to recycle everything. It is actually very important to make sure to recycle every, all of your old computers, cellphones, some, sometimes which you can donate, but any old electronics to recycle them the proper way. And the farmer's market will continue throughout the month of October. And so you've got a couple more opportunities to get down there and some local food, 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM, down at Sloan Street and First Street. And I also want to make sure to thank everybody who helped out so much with the Irvington Ave Food Truck and Craft Beer Festival, especially Trustee Cullen and the, all the businesses on Irvington Ave and residents who helped organize and...
Adam Lerner.
And Adam Lerner, who also helped organize this event. And it was a unbelievable total success, somewhere between 2,000 and 2,500 people. The feedback from the food trucks was really excellent. The feedback from the visitors was excellent. I think everybody had a pretty good time. And we definitely already have plans brewing, which is a great pun for craft beer. And, thank you. It's bad when you have to, you know, appreciate your own jokes. But there are, there are some plans brewing for, for another one at some point. And we just want to thank again everybody for coming out, and especially all the businesses on Irvington Ave. It was a, just a really excellent opportunity to bring a lot of folks into South Orange, not only into South Orange, but into, you know, one of our greatest neighborhoods in South Orange. Did it, we did have a presentation scheduled tonight for the community coalition on race. They will not be here tonight, so we'll let you know when they will be rescheduling too. So we can move on to the approval of minutes. Are we doing our September minutes at the next meeting? Is that right? So we just have our executive session minutes from August 11th and September 8th and 22nd? Okay, do you have a motion? Moved by Trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Clark. All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed abstentions?
I have an abstention, September 22nd.
September 22nd. That's right.
Your short meeting.
That's a record-breaking short meeting.
The one sheena wasn't there.
Yes. Okay, thank you. It's time I'd like to move on to public comments. If there's anybody from the public who wishes to speak.
You know, there's a microphone right there.
Good evening. Mayor Tor- Torby.
Sorry, if you could just introduce yourself.
I'm sorry.
Everybody knows you, but just for formality, it's okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Good evening. Mayor Alex P. Torby, trustees, Ralph Cramden. I have two questions tonight. The first question is about the JAC. I'd like to know, is it gonna be a kill shelter? The second question is, is Newark taking over? Now I'd like some answers. The second question has to do with development. I'm sorry, I am very organized tonight, I apologize.
So the second question is, is Newark taking over our development?
No, is Newark taking over the JAC?
Oh, okay. Okay.
Well, wait, I, 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 okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, I guess not.
Might be the person in the back.
That's why I want to ask, just in case someone's hiding somewhere. Okay, the, the two questions about the JAC, Mr. Lerner, is there anything for Mr. Lewis that you're in a position to share about, about the JAC tonight publicly?
Just generally, and, and there's been a settlement agreement reached with the JAC at their request. They're voluntarily closing down the operations, our understanding. I think all the animals are out of the facility. The village is exploring our options in terms of what we will do for future animal control. In the interim, we continue to use Associated Humane for the drop off of our animals, and in conjunction with our full-time animal control officer. And beyond that, there's, I don't even know where Newark came from, but...
You know, it's associated.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Let's move to ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2014-17, second reading and public hearing of a bond ordinance authorizing capital improvements to certain sewer facilities in and by the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties located in the county of Essex, which benefit the township of South Orange Village, a municipality located in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating an aggregate amount of 481,500, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not exceeding 481,500 in aggregate principal amount of bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof.
Thank you. I'm seeing this as a second reading. I would like to open it up for public hearing. So if there's any members of the public who wish to speak about this ordinance in particular, please come forward. And seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak about this ordinance, unless there's any further information, Mr. Lewis or Trustee Levinson that you want to provide on this, I would ask for a motion.
I move.
Moved by Trustee Cullen?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Levinson. Could we have the roll please?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Thank you. Second reading of 2014-18, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending and replacing chapter 27, article four, pay-to-play of the village code in its entirety.
Thank you. Seeing this is the second reading of this ordinance, I would like to open the meeting up for public hearing. And seeing as there is no members of the public who wish to speak about this ordinance, unless there's any further questions or comments, ask for a motion.
I move.
Moved by Trustee Cullen?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Levinson. Could we have the roll please?
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one ordinance for first reading.
Ordinance 2014-20, introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending and replacing portions of chapter 122, recycling, article one of the village code.
Thank you. My understanding is this is just bringing our municipal code in compliance with statute. Is there anything further?
No, this was language provided by the county and the solid waste advisory committee from the county, and it complies with the state regulations. And that's, it changes some of the definitions, and beyond that, it's, it's 100% driven by that.
I had, I do have a question on that. When I was reading through this, it points out that for residential, all of these different materials are to be source separated, source separation from municipal solid waste streamed by the single-family and multifamily residential, commercial, I don't know, office park, et cetera. Although presently, we are single-streamed for our residential.
No, it, it means from solid waste.
From solid waste?
Yeah.
Separated from solid waste.
Solid waste.
Okay.
It is not intended to require separate separation of these items. We can continue single-stream.
Okay, 'cause otherwise, I thought it was contradictory, given that we have a...
But further on in that ordinance is the single-stream.
Alright.
Okay.
Trustee Levinson, is there anything that residents need to know in terms of what these changes will entail for recycling, or is it just basic?
Just clarification.
Okay, I move the ordinance.
Okay, moved by Trustee Cullen?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Clark. Could we have the roll please?
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yeah.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Okay. I move that ordinance 2014-20 be scheduled for second reading and final passage at the November 10th, 2014 board meeting, and a public hearing be held at that time for the reference ordinance. The village clerk was authorized to take the necessary actions to publish such public notice for such hearing.
Okay, moved by Trustee Davis Ford?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Cullen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Thank you. Next is one appointment that I'm making to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, and that is for, Steve, you might have to help me with...
Sure.
Diego Ramenera?
Uh huh, that sounds good.
Okay. So congratulations, Diego. We're very excited to bring more folks on to the PIMC. We're gonna hear a little bit more about that later. Next is our consent agenda.
Okay, resolutions 264 through 282 are on the consent agenda.
That they are. Are there any questions by any board members, or any comments, concerns, and any consent agenda items?
The one question I would have, has everybody signed the affidavit, the certification and the audit?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, unless there's any further questions or comments, I have a motion.
I move.
Moved by Trustee Davis Ford?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Schnall. Could we have the roll call please?
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's time I would like to open the meeting up again for public comments, if there's anybody who wishes to speak.
Okay, now, now, good evening. My name is Alyssa Arrington, a longtime resident. I have it all. Yes, here it is. Okay. I am the teacher and you're the student. You're gonna put on your thinking caps. Can you explain to me why you give out pilots and Mr. Lua taxes to developers? Is it a payoff? Are you going to... Is it payoff? Oh, here it is. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. To get them to bu- build on your properties? Are you willing and dealing with the developers?
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, closed public comments. You know, I could just very briefly, you know, say that, yeah, we, we obviously do offer pilots as part of redevelopment opportunities. That's all, you know, very well-known. You know, the idea of the pilot existing is supposed to be an incentive for someone to come and build. And so, in a situation where you have a property or town where there's not as much interest in development as perhaps the municipal government wants, there's very little tools that municipal governments have at their disposal to actually encourage and create incentives for new businesses to come into town. The benefit of obviously doing that is that, you know, the amount that this board and our, you know, administration has done over the years to really cut all the fat out of our budget is pretty, is pretty tremendously significant. And at a certain point, you have to start looking at new ways to create revenue. So one of the ways to do that is by offering, potentially offering this incentive in a particular property that otherwise might not be competitive for someone to come and develop for. So you wouldn't want to necessarily just offer it to every person who walks in the door. It's not something, and there's a pretty big debate, I think, in the kind of planning community around whether pilots are a good idea or a bad idea. And there's plenty of professionals and experts that will argue either side of it. It's something that we've considered in South Orange before, something that, you know, we would consider in the future, but it's gonna, you know, it's a case-by-case basis, and, you know, we certainly couldn't, me, myself, or anybody up here really, couldn't speak to whether we would certainly, you know, definitely offer to one person or another person at any point in the future. So, obviously, like I said, there's kind of a debate around it. The idea that, you know, I don't know, you know, that it's some sort of payoff, or that the village doesn't get something appropriate in return, you know, is not, you know, a factual part of the debate. There's a lot of really good arguments that people make one way or the other. But at the end of the day, the portion of the property taxes that we get, you know, as most of us know, is very small, right? It's only about 28% on each property tax dollar. So when you have a, a property where you've given a tax abatement, the amount that we collect is above 90 or 95%, and that's money that goes straight back to the municipal government. So in a situation like that, someone might be getting, let's say, a slight percentage less on their overall payment, but the municipal government would collect a much greater percentage, because now the percentage that is being collected is, you know, the 90 or 95 or 98% versus 28%. And so, you know, there's plenty of interesting articles online that Blaustein and other, you know, magazines and schools put out about it. You know, it's something that I know that we all talk about, you know, and we, you know, have the potential of a property or a developer coming into town. You know, it's a very well-practiced practice. It's certainly not something that's unusual to do. And at the end of the day, you know, it's gonna be a decision based on, you know, the administration and the board of trustees, and whether, you know, the board is comfortable that... along, whether it's the right thing to do to encourage investment in the town.
In properties that are in redevelopment, so.
Right. Which is a pretty big chunk of our central business district. So hopefully, that was a little bit helpful there. Unless there's any new business, would ask for a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
I move.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Column. Seconded by Trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I would now like to call this conference agenda meeting to order at eight forty-six P M. Could we have the roll, please?
Village President Torpe?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Column?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Levison?
Present.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnall?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Lerner?
Here.
Mr. Rother?
Here.
Susan Caljean, present. An adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, N J S A ten colon four dash six. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may not be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
Thank you. So I got a couple of little quick updates. One is a conversation I've been having a little bit with Trustee Schnall, a little bit with some other folks, which is trying to figure out a way to identify, and it's something that we've done, I think, a really exceptional job of in the downtown, and now we're doing a very exceptional job of on Irvington Ave, which is identifying that within South Orange, there are multiple different types of business communities that exist, and figuring out ways to support all of them. So it's not just supporting retail storefronts in the downtown, but it's supporting the secondary business district on Irvington Ave, and it's also finding a way to support business owners in town who might own a business and work out of their house or work out of Starbucks. I certainly see those people down there all the time, myself, I guess, included. And that there are really interesting ways to create, support communities for that. And whether that is doing some of what the Public Information and Marketing Committee does, which Trustee Schnall will talk a little bit more about later, as far as holding meetups and bringing business communities together, that also includes something, you know, for example, exploring whether we want to try and create a coworking or business incubation space in the village. And that would be something that would, you know, we know we've got a lot of entrepreneurs and entrepreneurial-minded people in South Orange. We've got a great business school just right up the road at Seton Hall, and we've got a downtown that's obviously a very easy commute to the city. We're coming out here for a muting, you know, a meeting is not, not a huge ask anymore.
I like, I like that idea of a space where people who work from home or hang out at Starbucks, that can be an incubator space. I like that.
So, so, yeah, it's something that, you know, we've talked about a little bit and, you know, starting to try and push that conversation forward. So it's just wanted to give a little bit of update that is something that, you know, we're talking about, thinking about, you know, trying to see what spaces could potentially work, what people out there are out there that could provide that, you know, some level of support for creating that community here. And so anyway, so there's, you know, certainly expect to hear more about that in the future, but, you know, I just think that, you know, you know, that it is a good example of how we've done a good job of not just kind of lumping everybody into one category, but it's looking at businesses and separating them out, and that each of these different business communities has different needs, and the kind of, you know, home-based business owner is a whole different thing, and some towns are starting to do more there, and so are we. And so that's just something to kind of keep a lookout for, you know, as we continue to develop that idea a little bit.
Just a question. Where is that conversation happening right now? In which?
Oh, there's a little bit of it happening in the Public Information and Marketing Committee. Some of it's just happening between me and business owners or the administration and business owners, or, you know, it's fairly ad hoc at the moment. I think if we get really serious about an idea, for example, if we've identified a space, or if we've identified a group of people that would be providing this service, you know, that, that creating a group of people to walk through the rest of the process would probably make sense. But, you know, it's a conversation that, you know, all of us could be having and should be having, and, you know, if anyone wants to participate more, you know, but it's very, it's very informal, kind of, right now.
Public Information and Marketing?
Yeah. So, well, you, you make a weird face on that.
I do, just because it, I, we're going through a master planning process right now where that conversation is very legitimate.
It is.
I agree with it completely.
So the reason.
But we need to be on the front end of trying to.
So as President Torpe described, it's, it's, a lot of specifics are far from being worked out, but what it is, is promoting our community and helping our residents to kind of fulfill some of their desires to build businesses, to give them an opportunity, whether it be in a home-based business or getting together. So part of that is we can offer an environment and a community, which is a big part of what we do as trustees, is offering that environment. So the meetups that we do are just an example, and I guess I'll, I should wait till the committee reports, and I'll describe some of the other examples, but it's, it's very early-stage conversations that we all are having and should be having as, as ways of promoting our village and its residents.
I think that's very legitimate conversation, but the sooner the better, and we've got the code review committee right now, where you're looking at zoning issues, and so if this is something legitimately, especially home-based businesses, which historically, if you look at our master plan, that's been challenging in the past as well. If we're trying to encourage that, the sooner that whatever groups are working on it can kind of submit recommendations on how we can allow for more of that in the town, at least for consideration. I just don't want to get to the code review, all those things that are very tangible right now that hopefully can be done in the new year, get that to this group so that we can make those recommendations to planning and zoning, which Trustee Rosner chairs, and then to the full board of trustees.
There are two parts to the conversation, right? There's the kind of policy part, which is what you're talking about, right?
Yes.
And then there's kind of the other part, I don't know, yeah, I guess logistics or practical, I'm not sure. And the conversation has certainly been leaning on that side, but like you bring up, because I, you know, I think a lot of the focus is trying to find a, a way to create a coworking space basically in downtown.
Yeah. Absolutely.
And that, you know, the, the planning and zoning issues there are, are existent but not significant, whereas the idea, if we were to encourage people to set up shop in their home more, that's a much more kind of significant planning issue.
Yeah.
And, you know, and how our different business districts and residential are zoned. So, so maybe, you know, at some point, we'll just make sure to just kind of keep in contact about that. And maybe at one point during that code review process, we can just have a, a little piece of the conversation that is about, you know, what does it mean to, to run a home-based business in South Orange, and whether they work at home or whether they work at Starbucks? You know, maybe we can make sure that that's just on the table.
Because what we had at the code review forum was people with existing businesses in, in physical, like brick and mortar in our downtown Irvington Avenue, but we, we had zero turnout from people who are either entrepreneurs, working from home, or finding satellite offices. So that group is not represented at all in what we're doing right now. So if this is legitimately what some of the conversations are that trustees are having, then like, you know, I'd welcome that. I think that's a great idea.
So, yeah, let's make sure to merge those two parts of that conversation.
Well, we had, we had that as part of the conversation that when we had the consultants in looking at what we're doing as in planning, and in fact, that was one of the ideas that it may even be in the planning document.
What, the vision plan?
Yeah. That they produced. It was an open conversation. And in fact, opportunities exist for people like accountants, where you go into tax season, they're looking for a place where they can bring their clients, but normally, they would be doing business at a home.
It's like flex space?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And, yeah, if anybody else, I mean, this, you know, started like with me tweeting at people who do coworking spaces and then meeting with, I mean, it's very informal.
We have so many people doing that now. It's incredible.
There are. And, and I think people see all of the growth in our downtown and are seeing this as more and more of a place to invest in, which is very exciting. It's, it's exciting when you, when you meet people totally outside of the, you know, South Orange circles that have heard of, you know, the great things that are happening in South Orange, just downtown. So that was another, oh, that was the first one. Student Hall, Student Hall, Seton Hall, there are some students at Seton Hall that are doing, putting together a really amazing event on November eighth, which I'll send more formal invitations to everybody in the board, and we'll send a little more information out to the community as well. Basically, what they want to do is create a workshop space where we can take some very kind of high-level policy issues, you know, global policy issues, and talk about what the university and what the town can do to work on those issues. What's kind of cool about this is a lot of the times, we've had these forums with the university, we've kind of said, okay, well, we're going to get, you know, an elected official, a village government person, a resident, a business owner, all these different interest groups, and then, you know, someone from Seton Hall. And we're kind of like flipping that a little bit, where we've got all these different interest groups from Seton Hall, athletics, Greek life, different academic departments, different schools, student government, all these different groups of Seton Hall, and then inviting folks from town to come kind of participate in that, where the students are really going to lead the discussion. And so we've identified about a half dozen different issues that we're going to talk about, and have some invitations going out to people who are already kind of volunteering in town as people that might be really interested to be engaged in that. And so soon, there'll be a Facebook and an Eventbrite and a few other things online that people can look at about that. But pretty excited about it, and, you know, really happy that students at Seton Hall are showing not only the interest in doing this, but are, you know, organizing it completely on their own. And it's just a great, I think it's going to be a great conversation. So that's just something I wanted to bring up. I will get more details and send the invites around as we get a little bit closer, give a little bit more information about all the different workshops that are happening, and if, you know, folks in town are interested in coming and participating, it's certainly open to everybody. Another update, Sustainable Jersey has a task force that I think I've mentioned here before, that includes a whole bunch of different people. It includes a couple elected officials, some managers and business administrators, someone from the state police and office of emergency management, people from the media, maybe about two dozen people altogether, that are working on how to find ways to better engage with and communicate with communities, especially through local government. So there's all these different focuses. There's a, you know, citizen interaction engagement focus, there's an emergency communication focus. So we had a couple really interesting conversations the other day. Basically, the task force has been formed very recently, split off into some smaller groups to work on different issues. And again, I mean, it's, it's an amazing opportunity because you've got all these people who are, you know, doing some of the things that we talk about doing here, and they're doing it in some other towns, too. So it's kind of interesting to hear their experiences and learn from that. But again, this is, this is another area where you go out and everybody, you know, at the table pretty much has heard of South Orange and what we do, to try and communicate better with our community, to try and make information available to people, and just, you know, it's just, it's, it's, it's a, it makes me, you know, just exceptionally proud to be in these meetings and know that there's so many people in South Orange that are doing this kind of work to try and connect to government and citizens better, and I think that we're seeing a lot of success there, and we have a lot more to do, but that people outside of South Orange see the value in that, you know, in addition to the people in South Orange, people are always asking. You know, and there's a lot of towns, I mean, it's hard for us to think about sometimes, but there are a lot of towns that don't really have a municipal website, that don't put their budget online barely at all. And so there's just really, you know, we've shown a lot of leadership for a long time in a lot of those regards. And anyway, there's just going to be some interesting topics that I'll bring up periodically as we kind of dig down and study some different issues. You know, the emergency communication one is a big one, collecting power outages and finding a better way to get that information from municipal government to county government to state government and out to the utility companies. Looks like that might be a project that we're going to be working on, and there's a whole bunch of others. So as I, as I get assigned in my group, the different projects I'll be working on, you know, I'll just update you guys once, once a month on, on those different things. But it's, it's, it's a really good group of people in Sustainable Jersey. You know, we had their executive director, Randy Solomon, come in, and this is a good segue to the next update, with Chris Daggett, who runs the Dodge Foundation, into the class that I'm co-teaching at Seton Hall. And we had, we've had a couple really interesting speakers come in. I think the last time I updated, it was after that, and they talked a lot about how nonprofits and governments can work together, and talked about some of the examples of how we've worked with Sustainable Jersey here in South Orange. Then we had a gentleman by the name Andrew Nicklin, who is the, works out of the governor's office in New York, and he's in charge of something called Open NY, which is this unbelievable data portal, open data portal, that the state runs, that we do not have anything equivalent of in New Jersey, which is unfortunate, that is really, really pushing some, like, pretty cool boundaries on how you can use data to make government work better. And it talked about the development of, you know, that basically, you know, kind of the star example of this is public transit, you know, at a larger city level, where governments, where public transit agencies all kept track of schedules and line information, all in their own format. Nobody could read the formats, nobody wasn't available to anybody. And a long time ago, Google started pushing people to make these available so that, you know, in select cities, you could see, you know, Google Maps, now we see it everywhere, right, the transit directions. You know, that didn't exist at one point, even though all cities had that information, you know, because they were running their, their train systems and bus systems. And so there's just this amazing movement of people who, you know, who have made some of this government data available, and then now you can go on Google Maps and you can get, you know, almost anywhere in the country, you can get public transit directions around. And that came, that private innovation came from government just saying, well, we have the data already, we're just going to now put it out in a format that anybody can take it and read it, and is exportable to anything. So when we talk about data, it sometimes is kind of boring, but on the other hand, the opportunity that it offers for innovation and for something that a consumer or citizen could really use is pretty incredible, because the government doesn't actually do the innovation, they just have to create the ability for someone else to do the innovations, and then create, you know, a, a business model on top of that. So he spoke, and that was a very interesting class, and we also had a whole bunch of people from the local media landscape come in and speak from the Dodge Foundation, Jersey Shore Hurricane News, from New Brunswick Today, from New Jersey Media Commons. It had, what was a pretty interesting conversation around the role that local media plays in government, how to create sustainable local media business models, as we've seen, it's been harder to do than maybe one would expect. So I had a lot of very smart people working on this every single day, you know, talk to us a little bit about how that looked. And that was, you know, pretty interesting as well. Obviously, our relationship with the media and theirs with the citizens is something that's really important for us to get information out. You know, even during an emergency, you know, local media, especially online media, is a one-hundred percent trusted, valued conduit, where we are putting information out and hoping that we get information back. the ability for someone else to do the innovations, and then create, you know, a, a business model on top of that. So he spoke, and that was a very interesting class, and we also had a whole bunch of people from the local media landscape come in and speak from the Dodge Foundation, Jersey Shore Hurricane News, from New Brunswick Today, from New Jersey Media Commons. And had what was a pretty interesting conversation around the role that local media plays in government, how to create sustainable local media business models, as we've seen that's been harder to do than maybe one would expect. So I had a lot of very smart people working on this every single day, you know, talk to us a little bit about how that looked. And that was, you know, pretty interesting as well. Obviously, our relationship with the media and theirs with the citizens is something that's really important for us to get information out. You know, even during an emergency, you know, local media, especially online media, is a 100% trusted, valued conduit, where we are putting information out and hoping that we get information back. So understanding those relationships is really important and just, you know, really interesting. And one last thing is just a reminder that I should have said in the beginning, which is that we do have a planning meeting on Monday at 7:00, and that is in our temporary offices at 76 South Orange Avenue. And so we have to get information out to the rest of the board very shortly about that. It's a little bit behind, but just if there's any member of the public who wishes to attend, sit in on that, 7:00 at 76 South Orange Ave. on Monday. Mr. Lewis?
Okay. A couple updates. Village Hall renovation meeting, we met with the architects. They are on schedule right now. We anticipate being out to bid on November 19th, with a planned receipt of bid date either late, late December or first week of January. To that end, one of the things that was recommended, and I put it out to the board, whether you would be inclined to try and do this in a special meeting or to incorporate it into one of our regular meetings, either on October 27th or November 10th. So either one of the two regular meetings or as a special meeting, either the week of November, of October 27th or November 3rd, what we would like to do is have a meeting, either at the meeting or a special meeting, with the architect and the project manager present, to go through, not the nitty-gritty details of the plans in terms of each outlet, but the overall program, the layout of the building, and what the plan is, to present to the board, get any feedback, and equally important, make sure that we're all on the same page, that that's the program and that's what we're going to build, because ultimately we will be looking for the board to sign off that, yes, that's, the architects looking for some clear direction and clear definitive decision that, yes, that's the program we want to go out to bid for. So at some point, perhaps later, whatever, we can discuss whether you want to incorporate that into one of the regular meetings, or whether you think it warrants a separate special meeting, at which point we'll have to coordinate dates. The Village Hall RFP, in light of the pushback of the data design and plans, and given that we've committed resources to pursue the, the RFP, we moved that date back. Currently, the date, the deadline for receipt of proposals for the adaptive reuse of Village Hall and potential development on the parking lot is December 3rd. Receiving those would give us roughly a full month to evaluate, vet them, get any feedback from any of the proposers, to make sure we fully understand what they're proposing, with the idea being then to have complete information, to be in a position to evaluate and compare any offers we receive to bids that we might receive either in the last week of December, the first week of January, for the renovation work. Redevelopment, just a couple updates. Thirdin Valley continues to move along. We will be in the, probably in the next meeting, or certainly no later than the next meeting after that, having an RFP. We're looking to go out for an RFP for a administrative agent to handle the marketing and, of the affirmative, of the affordable housing units. Other than that, they continue to indicate that they are on schedule for fourth quarter December 15 completion. The gateway has been CO'd for its second and third floors, anticipates CO for the fourth floor within the week, so that's moving along as well. Police Headquarters RFP, we were out for, we did receive a total of 11 bids. We formed a sort of an ad hoc committee to review those proposals from the architects, narrow them down to two or three, and anticipate interviewing two or three. Happy to report that the initial proposals, all but two of the 11 were below the amount budgeted, and in most cases significantly below. So we'll have an interview, and I would anticipate potentially, ideally as early as the next meeting, to have a resolution on with a recommendation to award a contract to an architectural firm for the assessment of Village Hall. And lastly, I'd like to sort of echo and expand upon Village President's comments on the food truck and craft beer festival on Irvington Avenue. And again, I attended, it was, I think, well-attended, heard nothing but positive feedback. It was sort of mentioned, but I'd like to specifically recognize Deputy Administrator Lerner, who really took the lead in organizing the event, did a fantastic job. Also, Tom Machetti, Public Works Director, and his crew, who were really invaluable both before, during, and after the event. They were there to set it all up, they were there to keep it all running and emptying trash cans, et cetera, during the event, break it all down. Police Department, who provided, and also shout out to Sheriff Antura for, they supplied a number of sheriff's officers as well, and overall, just a great event, and also, finally, the entire Irvington Avenue Committee, Doug Zacker is the chair, and, and all the work they did on that event. That's all I have.
Can I ask him one question? Barry, going to the Thirdin Valley redevelopment, I've gotten a lot of questions about the parking garage, because to some, the building looks complete from the front, so they want to know it's going to open. I know the plumbing and electrical work have to be done, but is there a target date for that to open before the building, before the residential's finished? And I know there's CFO issues and so forth.
Yeah, there, there, I mean, part of the requirement on the agreement was the staging that the garage had to be built first. Part of that was just financially protecting ourselves, because a lot of our consideration was the parking spaces, and we wanted to ensure that the structure, the parking deck at least was built in the event something went wrong with the development. So the phasing was, was largely directed to that. There is a possibility, and we continue to discuss with them, the timing of it, there is connections between the deck and the apartment building that will, you know, delay. So even though the deck may look done, it's not necessarily done inside in the internal connections, but certainly to the extent they can, and we have encouraged them, if there's any way to open the deck before the buildings get open. I think at a minimum, when the, that most of the structure of the apartments are built, even though they're doing interior work and waiting on COs, we should be in a position to get the deck CO'd and open, when that day may be. I'll, I'll certainly report as soon, as soon as we have more information.
Okay, thank you.
Alex, can I ask a question? Mr. Lewis, for the, I think we had talked actually at our last meeting, we were going to convene a, a small committee to come up with criteria prior to the December 3rd deadline for setting up criteria, metrics, waiting for, in case we do get multiple RFPs?
Yeah, and we did, and it's probably a good idea in anticipation of, because, you know, to me, one of the most significant issues, part of it is obviously what are palatable or acceptable uses in Village Hall, although I think that's going to be less of an issue than what level of development on the parking lot would be tolerable and consistent with the neighborhood and acceptable to the board. It certainly wouldn't hurt, maybe to have, have a group formed in advance of that and sort of start establishing, like, what would we accept? Certainly open to what the composition of that would be. I don't know if it comes out of planning and zoning, or if there's some other committee that logically it flows from, or if there's volunteers here, but I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. I think, I think it is a good idea. I'd be happy to serve on it, and I think it's, we should be setting up when it comes to it.
I think a couple months ago, we were supposed to send suggested names to the Village President, who'd be appointing the committee, when we first agreed to do this, and that we would wait so that we weren't running around in circles deciding what we would or wouldn't accept, because if we get zero proposals, then we just wasted our time, so that it would be, and Alex, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, we sent you some names, and I think people still can, because no committee's been appointed of the different stakeholder groups, and it would be our professionals, Historic Preservation, Historical Society Development Committee, SAVCA, a couple trustees, the Village President, Administrator, Engineer, and that, that would meet after we received the proposals on the 3rd.
Have we received any proposals?
No, because there's a deadline, and I, I'd be surprised if anybody submits any meaningful amount in advance of the deadline, just because if the due date's the due date, most people kind of wait logically.
Yeah, but, but Trustee Calm, I actually think we should convene that group. You're right, there's a, there's a chance that there may not be any proposals coming in at all, in which case, you know, there may have been some effort spent, but I'm concerned about if we wait till December 3rd, and we try to turn something around that fast, and your holidays are coming up, I, I see, I think we should get ahead of that.
I don't know what the group would talk about in advance, because we've already been provided the Excel spreadsheet, the template of the finances of any project that comes in, and to just plug in those numbers immediately would be a turnaround of a few minutes, just to see what the finances of that is.
That's just the dollars.
And soon then, the conversation is a question of value judgment. The historic aspect of having this as a municipal building versus what other potential uses are.
It's a good debate to have, I think.
And, no, it's a great debate, but I, I just, I mean, I'd be happy to meet in advance if, if that's what the board wants to do, but not knowing what the proposals are, you could come up with 50 different uses that could potentially come in, and without something in hand, then you're just discussing the value, again, value decisions about what to do with the building.
Well, a meeting would allow you to at least rule out things that you know would not be acceptable, and I'd be willing to be a part of that group.
I, I think it might be a little premature. Maybe, maybe, maybe we could put the group together and just make sure everybody's confirmed, everybody's good to go, but, you know, I know, at least me personally, I don't want to get together until I know what we're dealing with, because I could talk for days about what we should do.
No.
Hypothetically.
And I know I'm not the only one.
Well, yeah, I mean, at a minimum, I think it would be helpful, beneficial, and I would certainly recommend forming the group in advance of December 3rd, and ideally even lining up a date for the first meeting.
That's right.
Sometime immediately after December 3rd, so you're not like December 4th scrambling to form a committee and line up a date. But understandably, yeah, to speculate on what may or may not be offered, and, you know, trying to guess whether it's acceptable or not, I, I don't know, but, but I definitely think we ought to form the group, and then have that group and line up a date for sometime relatively shortly after December 3rd.
Can you appoint the group, Mr. President?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think we agreed at that meeting that it would just be, it didn't need to be a board approval, but rather you just appoint people to like a working group.
Okay. So if anybody has any other names or sug, I mean, I'll get something out to everybody of what the list is.
I sent mine to you already.
Okay.
I did.
It's in my spam folder.
Get out of here.
Okay. I'll make sure to get all that together. Uh, Trustee Lovison.
Uh, Village Council.
Sorry. Oh, yeah, you got a couple.
Water. Progress. There was a global memo on the, the state of the search for alternate water that was posted on our website, which indicated that the committee was going to be having a meeting with consultants to explore next steps. That meeting took place, and if you will look at the consent agenda, there were several items there that dealt with that. One in particular was the letting of a contract to determine the amount of water that should be purchased from New Jersey American. That's a critical amount that has to be determined, which has an influence on the price and the rate, ultimately, that's going to be paid by our residents, and we're going to be getting the assistance of HDR, engineering consultants, to, to help us determine what that amount should be. Also, in the future, you can expect to see contracts being let to study the condition of the system. We have to have a much better handle on what the condition is so that we can put together an operating budget going forward, once the operations and management contract is going to be let. There's been a, a good step forward made in the negotiation with New Jersey American. They have indicated that they will accept a purchase agreement for 2 million gallons a day, and construct all of the infrastructure that we need to create that interconnection. Currently, our, our peak usage on a day is 3 million gallons and change a day, but that number can be reduced significantly if we begin to address leaks in the system. So that having a floor of 2 million gallons is a good, positive step in the right direction, and New Jersey American will give us a two-year window to reduce that. So if we, we go in with something closer to 3 million gallons a day, but we're able to control a leakage over the course of the first two years of the contract, we're going to be able to reduce that amount that we have to purchase back down to 2 million. So that was a very, very positive development in our negotiation with them. Sit.
I just would like to add on to what Steve has just indicated, that some of the conclusions that we came to, that we need to aggressively go after the leak detection within the system. One, because of the contract, and part of that aggressiveness goes into hiring a firm that will be able to go out and find leaks. The other is replacement of meters, which are now aged and may be running slow, and not doing the right calculation when we look at consumed versus what we put into the system. So those are, those are some of the components that we are currently looking at and, and raising as, as questions. From the Finance Committee, there's no real significant item to report on right now. Only just aside, did we get any further information from Invessta, on the bond? On the bond, ECIA bond?
From, yeah. I'll follow up last, we discussed it in Senate, and was waiting on a, an updated POS from the Council.
Okay.
Okay. My name is Owen. We met September 17th. The Village, Village Wide Rehab Plan was discussed, and subsequently, the Village Planner, Susan Gruel from Hira Gruel, did present the Planning Board with the Village Wide Rehab Plan, which I don't know if it was distributed to the Board of Trustees yet.
Did she? Can you go over that? I had no idea she presented it to the, like, recommendations, or just that we met the requirements?
No, just the report. We haven't, we're reviewing, the Planning Board will be reviewing it next month, because we just got it the same day as the Planning Board meeting.
Okay.
But I'll make sure it gets forwarded to the, actually, Adam, do you have it right there? So, no, okay.
Who has it? Susan's recommendation on Village Wide Rehab?
No, she, to the study, not the recommendation.
The study?
Okay, so, we'll forward that, we'll forward that to the Board of Trustees, but, you know, the basic, as I think, as I think Trustee Calm pointed out before, we pretty much qualify based on the age of the housing stock, because more than 70% of the homes are over 50 years old, which qualifies us by that alone. But we have to discuss the pros and cons of the Village Wide Rehab Plan.
Yeah, the, the criteria is actually 50%, and not surprising that they reported, and also based on the infrastructure, so I, I look forward to reporting.
Okay.
And in the interim, I've also asked Redevelopment Council, Mr. Baumann, and Susan Gruel, to kind of report back as to where do we go from here, what are our options? It's, even the statute's a little unclear in terms of how you, do we approve that townwide by resolution by the Board, so I, I actually have emailed them. I will follow up and, and report back to the Board as to what the next step in the process is, in terms of accepting or approving. I think it still goes through the Planning Board to either make that recommendation, get the report, make the recommendation, and then from there, I believe it does come back to this Board to approve it, and then, once there's a townwide designation, there is still that individual plan. So hopefully, we'll get something from our professionals, kind of really outlining the process, and I'll share it with the Board.
Okay. Thank you. Then, at the Village President's request, we discussed the Ward Place Parking, which has been discussed many times in the past. You know, the issue is, the street was, was designed to allow parking at a portion of the street. However, several years ago, many residents came here from Ward Place, and the two streets that neighbor it, objected to the, to allowing parking on those streets, so we, we did not go ahead with it. But there is some concern that we need more parking in that area, and, and that the street was designed for it. So we didn't officially come up with a recommendation or not, although I think Steve and myself leaned towards allowing parking. Sheena was adamant that we shouldn't, but, so, I don't know what to tell you, you can throw it back to the Board, and we can have a whole discussion about it, but the, the point was made that, that we will get the residents from Ward Place again, who probably most likely, the majority would still be against allowing parking there. And the question is, what's the greater good of the village, allowing parking there or not, you know?
Well, and that, the original, the original point of it was for Seton Hall, and, and that need doesn't exist.
The original point of it.
That doesn't mean that the residents may not even want some parking there, or that we shouldn't put parking there, right? That's just not, that wasn't where the original idea, not the original, the latest iteration came from, which is driven by Seton Hall.
So, and, although we also talked about limiting it to two-hour parking at the, at the original, the same parking regulations that were on the other streets, to, to prevent all-day parking there from other commuters or students. And it's still, you know, it's a tough thing, because this is a residential street, and we don't like to allow parking on the street just ad hoc basis, and we don't allow it on other streets in the village. We've been very careful not to allow it on the streets to prevent commuters from parking on streets that are close to the train station, so this sort of falls in that same kind of category. So, you know, it's a, it's a tough one. It's just, it's just a real, it's a real tough one, you know, but I, I don't, you know, think that we should, I don't necessarily think that we should need to set an example by allowing parking on, on the street, but I, unless except for in special circumstances, like when Seton Hall had Orientation Weekend, or something like that, and we need extra parking. But it's up to the Board, you know, I don't know if Walter, Deborah, or Howie have any comments.
I, I just think that we should make sure that we get current feedback from all the residents, as you stated, but with that feedback, we need to step back and make a, an objective decision, as you also stated, that's in the best interest of the village, or was that you, Alex? The decision should be what's in the best interest of the village, with feedback from the residents.
I would ask, Sheena, do you happen to know, is there any overflow or any effect on any of the plans for the Irvington Avenue corridor, in terms of would parking on Ward Place or not affect that in any way?
Well, what's unique to the situation, it was kind of my hail mary at the last Board of Trustees meeting, because I am adamantly opposed to it, just because when we did the temporary parking restrictions, I walked that block to let people know that we've got a situation on Seton Hall's campus. I know you guys came out before, you're used to kind of what the Board agreed to two years ago was no parking, and they, they were able to work with that. As Trustee Rosner indicated, that every neighborhood is a little bit unique, the same way that we addressed Tuxedo Park, is that they were comfortable with this, it was more quality of life than public safety or anything else. And what those folks on Ward had recently stated as far as two years ago, was we would prefer to not have parking across the street from us, because it creates a quality of life situation. From that, I was assuming that we would be reverting back to the no parking as soon as the COO happened for the deck, and as a part of that, we let the folks from Together North Jersey, and the people who were evaluating the grant application, look at that as no parking. So as a part of the plan that I forwarded to the Board of Trustees- So as a part of the plan that I forwarded to the Board of Trustees, that was going to be the proposed bike route connectivity from Ward, the back end of Seton Hall, through Irvington Avenue, to the train station. So that's why I asked for comments. It's coming up in my report, is that if we are moving away from that, then we need to identify an alternative. Right now, there isn't parking on the other side, and there wouldn't necessarily be room for a bike lane, because it's pretty tight. The opposite side of the street now, directly in front of the homes, moves the white line all the way to where their curb is, so there's no parking over there. If we do allow parking on the Seton Hall side, then there wouldn't be just, from, from a space perspective, room for a bike route. So if that is a determination the Board of Trustees is going to make, then we need to figure out an alternative way to reroute what we would assume in the future would be some level of people biking from the university in a bike-share program between SOTAC, what your committee's working on, the connectivity from the university to the train station in some larger master plan. So if the parking outweighs...
Unless that, did you go with the piece on Ward Place was a share row?
Exactly. But I do think just because Seton Hall, as I mentioned at the last meeting, is going to be charging visitors to come on campus, that there's going to be a higher demand for free parking, which would be happening in the residential zones and along the perimeter, if they charge guests to come on campus. So I assume that those spots would be filled pretty quickly.
Yeah, I would think that Seton Hall would probably want there to be no parking there for that reason.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, we also assume that the, the new parking deck at Seton Hall has eased the parking problem enough that they don't need any parking off-campus, forgetting the financial issue for students who have to pay for the deck. But there are, as I understand it, there's more than ample parking now on campus.
Yeah, they haven't expressed to us the need for this, for that additional parking.
So I don't, I don't sense any great consensus to move forward with allowing parking there.
Okay.
We also discussed the Volunteer Committee for Home Improvements, Trustee Schnall had raised, and then there was some talk about why we should hold off on it, but I think it's one of the new, you know, a committee that we could organize, we could form, look for volunteers that would help homeowners, you know, come up with ideas and ways for home improvements, and use local expertise and advice. So that'd be like another committee that we'd like to start. Of course, we probably should end two or three other committees before we start another one.
I thought, I thought that we got some sort of award if we had the most number of committees.
Yeah, well, I think, I think we're a repeat winner already on that one.
Yeah, right. You already set the record.
Actually, I think, I remember when Trustee Goldberg went through the whole chart, and we did eliminate a few of the committees, and we probably, you know, we probably should take a chart of the whole committees together and see which ones are really active and which ones aren't. Two of them, for instance, you know, the Recreation and Arts boards, those committees don't really regularly meet anymore, right?
That's correct, although interestingly, the Cultural Arts Committee, there was a demand to start it again, so.
Okay, well, and sometimes these committees come and go, depending on what topics are available, or if there's anything hot. So, you know, if we decided we were going to pave over Flood Hill, I'd have a feeling the Recreation Committee would quickly form again, but, so. But anyway, this would be another committee that I think we would like to start, and make Trustee Schnall the liaison for the, for the board.
Sorry, done.
You just made him a trustee.
And the code review by the South Orange Village Alliance, which I think Sheena already mentioned before, that they, and I think she's discussing later, actually, in her report, and that was the other one, and we're hoping that they bring a report to, we're hoping they bring back something to the Planning and Zoning Committee before the end of the year. That's it.
Okay. I think we skipped over legal.
No, we skipped over public safety.
You skipped over finance, too, didn't you?
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Yeah, Trustee Levinson, did you have anything on finance?
We did.
We did, yeah.
Did you? All right, we did not do legal.
Now, Deborah was late to the meeting, so I figured we'd have to make her late for her report.
That's okay, I'm a team player. We met September the 22nd was our last meeting, and the main matters that we talked about was the recodification status. As you well know, that the main focus was the pay-to-play, and that's, you know, an ordinance that, that we've already discussed. And we also discussed disaster preparedness, and Adam Lerner is taking the point on that, and he has made appointments of safety wardens for the village, and he's in the process of setting up CPR and AED training for village employees, as well as the library and bar employees. And the rescue squad will be the organization that will be giving these classes at a minimal cost. For the public, though...
Can trustees get in on that?
Trustees can get in on that. And for the public, Adam Lerner, could you just explain what AED is?
You didn't want to say defibrillator, did you?
No.
No. Automated Electronic Defibrillator.
And what purpose or value does that add?
Depending on the type of situation, if someone's heart, it pretty much jumpstarts them.
Yeah. Oh, would you, would you like to say something?
If you're, if you're experiencing ventricular fibrillation, an AED will stop your heart with the hope that it restarts with the correct rhythm in place. So it doesn't work for all cardiac conditions, but the fib, cardiac, there are cardiac, some of the more common cardiac conditions that can cause, like a sudden cardiac arrest, can be mitigated with an AED.
And the real value of this, this is, it looks like a paddle or something like that?
They're very easy to use. You can take them off a wall and instruct, they read it out loud, it says, "Step one, plug it in, step two, you know, do this." The only step it doesn't give is to turn it on, but once you turn it on, you know, it kind of helps you from there. And cities, I think Seattle is one of them, that like just have like incredibly well-saturated CPR training. They, they're, the witnessed, the survival rate for witnessed cardiac arrests is like, I don't remember exactly what the statistics are, but it's double, triple, quadruple the rest of the country. So if someone sees someone having a heart attack, you know, more people having access to know how to do something about it makes a huge difference.
And that was the real point, and thank you both for helping me with that, is the value of saving lives is proven to be significant. And so here's another opportunity for quality of life, because of the training of our employees and people around with this sort of thing.
It'll wake you up during the meeting.
I need one now. Luddington, I'm not going to discuss, because that, I think, you're not going to discuss it either?
I don't want to discuss it either. We are still trying to get a date for an Eat Healthy Initiative by St. Barnabas. We have been having some challenges with dates between the availability of St. Andrews and the scheduling with St. Barnabas. So I'm hoping to be able to nail that down, and if the date that I'm looking at is that last, is the, like, the second Thursday in November, if that works for everyone, we'll get some information out real quickly. And this is where St. Barnabas brings one of their chefs in, and teaches people to actually cook, and he'll prepare a meal, and the people in attendance will participate in the preparation of the meal, and then enjoy eating the meal at the end of the day, with the hopes that they, they leave with some skills about how easy it is to eat healthy and eat well, and have enjoyable opportunities to make things that, you know, they know they will be able to integrate into their family.
Probably a good idea at the end of November, do you? Do you? I guess combine everything.
Big birdies.
Oh, just saying. And then we had, Trustee Levinson and I had an opportunity to meet on the theme of wellness, so we're looking to incorporate some preventative or proactive care and training for our employees in the village. And we met with two executives from St. Barnabas about two weeks ago, and I'm going to ask you to share with everyone about that.
Yeah, we're looking, yeah, we're looking for an objective to create a wellness program within the village for our employees, and we invited St. Barnabas, who have a program, two executives, one the CEO of Ambulatory Care, and the other one being a senior vice president of their corporate initiatives, to discuss some of the options that would be available. And in fact, there are functions which are currently available at St. Barnabas, because we have a relationship with our, currently with them, with our comp cases, that we're looking to expand that to include an employee health program, which is being proactive and have various components that they could provide to us.
And the goal of that is to just have healthy employees, and the financial benefit to that, healthy employees also helps the village maintain the cost of healthcare. So, and so those are the two objectives for implementing such a program. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Calm?
Actually, pulling something up for Deborah and Howard. So there is Healthy Communities Grants in New Jersey, and they are sponsored by the Department of Health, and the Department of Health conducts these workshops throughout the year, that if you send people from your community, whether it's elected officials or staff that really have an interest in public health issues, that they award you points, so that when you go after the grant, they look collectively, whether it was just we submitted a proposal, or do you have a kind of a long-term commitment towards...
Oh, that's awesome.
...public health in your town. So I will...
So you're sending it to Howard and I?
Yeah, you can both see it. I was planning on attending. I sent it to Trustee Schnall, also from Recreation, so the more we can bank people attending the workshops, the better chance that we can secure some...
Good stuff.
...money for it.
Thank you.
My report? All right, let's start with, okay, a few things going on here. Public safety is the radio communications, and Trustee Levinson, if you have anything to add, please feel free to chime in. So, good news and bad news, but I just wanted the board to know exactly where we were in terms of funding and timeline. There are going to be some proposed changes to the Phase Four scope of work. We had received from RCC, if you remember, they were the group that presented before the Board of Trustees, we awarded Phase One, we awarded Phase Two and Three, and now we are looking at Phase Four. And as a result of some of the things that we didn't foresee in advance, not knowing exactly what the issues were, we did go through a proposal with them that is considered off-contract labor. They have provided us hours for Phase Two and Three, because there were some things within there that they didn't ultimately need to do, because we were moving on to the state system. So they've been very good at providing some documentation, but we still are looking at change orders for Phase Four. Right now, their proposal is, and this is still being negotiated, based on some of the things that they thought were necessary, but we thought they were on-call, or things that we could have other departments do, or professionals that we have working on issues. It was $28,000 as proposed by RCC, above and beyond what was originally in the Phase Four that we had considered. This had to deal with control stations, order under NJICS, which is the New Jersey Interoperability Communication System, equipment and project management, scheduling, coordination, oversight, which we felt were on-call services, required FCC licensing work, field testing for NJICS for baseline data, et cetera. So that's at the peak. It would not be to exceed anything above $28,000. But right now, we don't know what that number is going to be. So to put this into full context, Phase One that we awarded was $9,585. Phase Two and Three, which were awarded together, were roughly $11,000. Phase Four, originally as proposed, was at $33,700. And the to-be-determined, what we will be bringing to the Board of Trustees, are change orders up to $28,000. Bringing that total RCC contract, which was $54,000 plus the TBD, up to $28,000, which is roughly in the, right around the $80,000 range or less. And then the procurement proposal, the actual equipment that we would need in the capital budget, this was a proposal provided by Motorola. As you saw, it was a pretty intense number that we would need to put in our capital budget, was right around $600,000 or less. And there was, we're currently in discussions about the fire department's involvement in this. Originally, we thought we'd just start with police and rescue, and then after working with the fire department a little bit more, it looks like they have some interest in the system as well, and the interoperability, and the better, just overall communications for all of our public safety departments. So again, the Phases One through Four for RCC, this is the consultants from beginning all the way through implementation, up to $80,000. And the procurement proposal that we will discuss when we get into the budget workshops will be up to $600,000 or less. That's on the high end. Any questions on that?
I'd just like to add to that. I think what we came to was a closure that we will go with all of the public safety departments with the new system, police, fire, and rescue squad. I have, in the past week, after a conversation with REMS, which is our, now going to be our dispatching for emergency services, and we had a discussion about the system, if they were using it, with a number of other emergency service organizations, and they had indicated and recommended that we take another look at another vendor other than Motorola. I've asked RCC to take a look at Harris and Tate as manufacturers, to do a comparison of costs between the, against the Motorola proposal, which is about $650,000. We are now in the process of changing our dispatch organization for the rescue squad to be REMS, which is in Newark, which changes slightly our plan for the implementation of the state system with the rescue squad, because the REMS will provide communications for the rescue squad in the interim. So the project is moving along fairly well. And we're looking at some time in the spring of next year to begin the implementation of the new communication system.
Howard, is the vendor that you mentioned on-state contract, or no?
Yes, they're all on-state contract.
Both of them.
Okay.
All three.
Great. Any questions on that? Okay, wonderful. Moving on to the next item. Excitement, I see it in your faces. All right, so the administrator already covered the police headquarters RFP. At his recommendation, that of our village engineer, it made sense to bring back the two lowest bidders for interviews. The ranges were anywhere from $10,000 up to $50,000. As you recall, we budgeted $50,000 for this study. And then the reps who are on this quote-unquote "working groups," the administrator, engineer, police chief, myself, and then we also brought in a representative from our Development Committee, who has experience in public safety projects, specifically police headquarters. We also have a Community Emergency Response Team, Community Leaders Meeting, scheduled for November 5th. As you recall, a lot of the after-action report from Hurricane Sandy dealt with how we involve the community in distribution of information, assisting at shelters, et cetera. And so this is going to be the first big community-wide leaders meeting with Andrew Boyarsky, who is our chairman of our CERT program, along with our OEM coordinator, and our deputy OEM coordinator, our village, deputy village administrator. And so, once I complete the invitation for this, it's mainly to send it to as many people as possible who are in a community leader capacity that can assist in a state of emergency. And if you have any questions about that? Good. Traffic calming policies. So I've researched this for a while, and I've sent information on to our Transportation Advisory Committee, as well as our engineer. Basically, the one that I thought was most appropriate was modeled after Maplewood, who actually took their policy from Arkansas. The way that they broke it down was an evaluation matrix, which is a rating criteria. They award points for speed, volume, traffic accidents, whether the road is a school crossing zone. If the total points exceed the minimum score to be considered for traffic calming, then strategies between our advisory committee and our engineer get evaluated. And then the important thing to consider is that all requests must be prioritized and considered against other project funding needs throughout the village. Again, this was brought up just because a lot of neighborhoods believe that they were speeding on their block, they bring it to the Board of Trustees, we refer it to a committee, if there is... If there appears that there is some level of speeding, then we start looking at studies that can be very costly. In the instance of, and I've talked about this a few times, the instance of Mayhew and Harding, the study alone would cost over $30,000. And I question that, not as an engineer, but just as a, someone who looked at the numbers, is that essentially 85% to 90% of people are going within 10 miles per hour, which is 35 miles per hour or less. And so the question is, do you spend 30,000-plus on a study where the overwhelming majority of people who travel those roads are actually within the limit or within a reasonable stretch of the limit and just not being a professional in the area? I don't know what the criteria or the evaluation should be, whether we, as a Board of Trustees, undertake an expensive study and then commit potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars in our capital budget to improvement for traffic calming. So, based on the recommendation from SOTAC, whatever we hear back from our professionals and also the Public Safety Committee, I hope to have a policy in the form of an ordinance before the Board of Trustees at our next regularly scheduled meeting in November. Any questions on that?
I'm just gonna throw in, just so you know, that was passed along to SOTAC at the last meeting.
Great. Sorry I couldn't be there. I passed along what Maple had had. And from what I understand from their Township Committee, it has been very successful. It just allows for a better understanding from each neighborhood, knowing what other neighborhoods deal with. Like for us, Mayhew and Harding versus like Scotland, whereas the volume was higher, the speeds were higher. It's a more of a school-crossing area so that we can prioritize these things and be able to show to residents how we make decisions, and it's less subjective about who has the most neighbors who come to a Board of Trustees meeting or Advisory Committee meeting and ask us to do something. The Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee. So we've had two people now review the food truck and craft beer festival. Amazing, 2,500 attendees. Again, another snaps cup, I think, to Deputy Administrator Adam Lerner. You're just a rock star. The committee has been so thrilled with the village's commitment to do something exciting for the area. And outside of the staff that were recognized, the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee really went above and beyond in a short period of time to mobilize the troops, get volunteers for the night of, people who did the wristbands, they handed out, this was exciting. The committee created a map of the entire corridor with information on the back about each one of the businesses, what their numbers were, what their website was. So for the attendees who were coming in, they might have been enjoying kind of the trucks and the beer a lot. But they also got a menu about, you know, what the corridor was about, and hopefully they'll be joining us on the corridor soon. And so that was Doug Zacker, obviously, our chairman over there. Tracy and Olivia, Tracy Raninelli, and Olivia Lewis Chang, who are the co-chairs of the Neighborhood Engagement Committee. And they recruited over a dozen volunteers for that night. Both Clark McCarthy and Laura Nichols, who are business owner liaisons, who helped get all the restaurants and retail establishments on board with that night, with putting out tables in front and encouraging them to offer specials. And so we really had an amazing group of businesses want to participate and not see it as competition, but rather the, the rising tide raises all ships. So it was, it worked out.
And don't leave out Alyssa, who was working the crowd.
Alyssa is like the permanent 24/7/365 rock star volunteer.
She's the ultimate volunteer.
So at any point that any one of these board members probably thanks a volunteer organization, Alyssa's at the forefront of making sure that she's doing her part to help the village.
And I'd like to add something to your comprehensive review of incredible, successful event, is that the stores, the restaurants who were open benefited, and I think I discussed that with you.
Yeah.
I was walking and looking and going into the restaurants, and they, they were also packed. And one or two restaurants ran out of food also.
Yeah, they did.
Because of the volume of people. The lines were so long with the trucks. The restaurants that were open benefit from the overflow. And so it was truly a win-win event for everyone.
Agreed. Thank you. And so the next volunteer bulb drop, are you ready, Alyssa? It is going to be another beautification project on Irvington Avenue is going to be Saturday, October 18th. Both Tracy and Olivia are already mobilizing the neighborhoods to come out and do a bulb planting so that we can see some beautification in the spring. Everybody received the Together North Jersey Draft Final Report, based on the series of stakeholder meetings that we had and the walkthroughs that we had. So any comments, and I have several of them, if you can let me know by October 15th, which is two days from today, because the final feedback time is by the 17th. They'll give me time to compile everybody's recommendations. And lastly, because I wasn't, well, it's not lastly. I wasn't at the last meeting, which is why you had a 45-minute meeting, but I didn't get a chance to give an update on what happened on September 10th and 11th, which was the Irvington Avenue Redevelopment Forums. As you recall, just for the benefit of the public who may not know exactly what I'm talking about, the Board of Trustees back in June approved eight redevelopment study parcels. And that was ultimately approved by the Planning Board in August, shortly after the property owners, all the ones in each one of the various eight parcels, received packets with the resolutions that the Board of Trustees passed and the ones that the Planning Board passed, a letter explaining the board's intentions for conducting these studies and how the process works, an FAQ document, and also an invitation to attend two different forums, which were attended by trustees, our administrator, our village planner, redevelopment council, and members of our Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee. We did this at two different times, one in the morning hours during kind of like light breakfast, coffee, and then one later at night, 8:30 and then 7:30. A total of 75 people attended, both the property owners themselves and adjacent property owners and the overall Irvington Avenue community. The status of the redevelopment studies, from what I last understood, it's not complete yet, but we just received the police reports on the studies that we asked to be investigated. And I'm sure Mr. Lewis can chime in on that. But we are hoping by the end of the month, early next month, that we will have recommendations from the village planner, which will go through the Planning Board process before it comes back to us. And then we are happy to announce a website, which is being updated, but since it's on all the material already, it's irvingtonavenue.weebly.com. And as you know, the group is working on a branding right now that should be launched very shortly. So for the interim, that's kind of the URL we're going with because it's free. And then we also have a Facebook page, which is SO Irvington Ave., A-E-V-E, not Avenue, but SO Irvington Ave., which is almost up to 300 people since the food truck event, which is amazing. Make sure you like it if you're on Facebook. This is Code Review Task Force. So this was also under trustee Rosner's report. It's actually just clarification. It's not being done by SOFC. It's an initiative of the village with cooperation from SOFC and then also the Irvington Avenue Committee. We had a business owner breakfast held on Wednesday, October 1st, which was an opportunity for those who are business and property owners to come forward and tell all of us kind of the concerns that they have. Again, this task force is comprised of various different individuals representing different segments in South Orange. We had a total of 40 attendees come from the business districts. And very shortly, we'll be launching a survey to those who are unable to attend, to be able to provide their feedback. And so the group right now is looking at all the aspects of the code. We are getting feedback from Planning Board, Planning and Zoning Committee, who it ultimately goes to, our Development Committee. And as a part of all this, we're also discussing the recommendations in terms of the village-wide rehabilitation, as well as matching grants for facade improvements. Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, you've probably seen those posters too. There is a big, massive, amazing, super exciting forum that's coming up on Sunday, October 26th, from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM in the SOPAC loft. I want to give a thank you to our village administrator, who reached out to different department heads who the committee had requested be in attendance. And also, I sent an invite, an invitation to the trustees, would love to have everybody there if possible. I can't recall a time when we've had a forum specifically for senior citizens, but I can tell you, as the largest village committee, and yes, we're there now, they are very excited to have so many folks interested in some of the senior needs that haven't been addressed in the past. So they've been working hard canvassing, you know, writing letters to the editor and op-ed pieces and hanging posters. So we're expecting good turnout. And then in conjunction with that, one of the things prior to the actual forum, we began working on was the senior bus route, in conjunction with the Parking Authority, the Department of Recreation, the various senior homes, meaning too, and then also within the committee. And I'd be happy to share that with everyone. But basically, we have some jitneys that are available during the day that are underutilized right now. We have on-demand for seniors to take advantage of the service, but it's very low in number. So either it was a marketing issue or a route issue or a combination of both, but we thought it'd be good to assemble a lot of different people together to review the transportation options a little bit more comprehensively and make recommendations. Right now, there's no budgetary impact, from what I understand, but we're hoping that by the new year, we'll have a pretty tight schedule that can be advertised to all the seniors in the community. And lastly, a special thanks on behalf of the Board of Trustees, is we had the great volunteer appreciation party, which was held on September 28th. And we had about 65 attendees. For those of you who weren't there, you could check it out in the news record, two-page color spread of all the amazing volunteers who came out, had some burgers, dogs, chicken, and some really good macaroni and cheese. And I just hope this is something, you know, it's great to see the board embrace kind of all the amazing things our volunteers do for us. I think we all wish we could do a lot more for them, but a good first step is just having an annual event where we bring all these volunteers together and we show them some gratitude for the amazing things that they do for us and in service to the Board of Trustees and the community at large. And so that wasn't more than 20 minutes, I promise. That's it. That's it. Bye. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Clark?
Yes. Always hard to follow.
Or easy.
Last Public Works and Infrastructure meeting was the 18th of September. A couple of things broken out from that. There was a follow-up meeting with a subgroup developing, or attempting to begin development of a forestry plan. We met with Rich Wallawitz, who is a certified forester, who hopefully can develop that for us. For folks who are worried about the big pile of dirt along the Raway River, the Raway Floom Cleaning and Dredging Project is done. And if we were reading correctly earlier, we actually got some money back. Subgroup of the Public Works Committee also met in reference to the Montrose School renovation. We met with Bill Kyle, Facilities Director with the School District, and some reps from PSE and G in trying to develop a Plan C or Plan D, as it were. And so we put out a couple of alternate scenarios to try to come up with something that was both financially more feasible and also workable. We'll see where that goes. And also, as you had alluded to earlier, we are working a little bit with the Transportation Advisory Committee on a bike group. And hopefully, we can work out some kind of a development of an easily instituted bike route throughout South Orange. I will also mention again that the River Greenway Committee, members of that group, are working with Seton Hall University volunteers, teaming up to help clean up and maintain the plantings along the Raway River. Anyone else who is interested is free to volunteer and join in with that. October the 25th is the next one. There is a, another date on November the 8th. I will be running the October the 25th. So if you are interested in volunteering, please contact me. That's W Clark at southorange.org. In other news, the Energy Policy Advisory Committee is looking for a new chairperson to lead that group. So if you're interested in energy policy and energy things related to that, and would like to try to help out the town with saving energy, et cetera, also please contact me with interest in that. Let's see, the Environmental, Environmental Commission Green Team has begun the work of looking at recertification for the Sustainable Jersey Program. We're still a couple of years out from needing that, but it tends to be a long slog, so glad they're getting underway with that. So they're trying to identify areas of opportunity for sustainability projects within South Orange. And again, anyone interested in joining the Green Team should also contact me, or you can contact riverdaystaff@gmail.com. Dot is dot.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Schnell?
All right, Fund Committees. So the, both the Recreation and Cultural Arts Committees, I'm sorry, those committees reported that the fall programs are well into working right now. In terms of on the cultural arts side, you may have seen from the Stay and Play Weekend, was also the debut of the insight art pieces. They were outdoor sculptures that were specifically chosen as being a juxtaposition of the art and the site where they were located. Now, some of them obviously had some ephemeral state because they were reigned on and windblown, but that was a part of the artwork, and the intention was to see how the elements would impact that. So it was kind of an interesting outdoor gallery, if you will, of South Orange. And then more traditional, there is the current exhibition in the Pierre Garrelly is Thou Art Mom. And coming up soon will be the first exhibit this year in cooperation with Seton Hall Students, which opens on October 30th, in a couple of weeks. Also, we expect to see the Gateway mural project, which was a really nice effort done by EEA Associates, the developers for the apartments down at the Gateway. And he's sponsoring, there were nine artists. And we expect to start seeing those, should be showing up in the next few weeks. So that'll be really interesting. The Giants of Jazz, which is scheduled for November 29th, will be honoring McCoy Tyner. On the rec side, a number of programs, as I said, are going on. In particular, though, one of the issues that this board needs to be aware of, especially as we go into our budget planning, especially in capital, the tennis courts by the Baird have been in a bit of disrepair for a while and are going to be needed to be repaired. And it is significant. In the past, a few years ago, we did a recovering, but now it's going to take a little bit more work on that. So that's something we would expect to have a, get a couple of proposals, some architects to take a look at that. And then in a larger capacity, looking at maintenance of the recreation, those are the fields, their equipment, et cetera. Deputy Administrator Adam Lerner, myself, and Department Head Kate Schmidt have been considering employing some examples of how to put money aside for maintenance and a usage feed model, which I know trustee Levinson has talked about in the past with me. And we're looking at that model. We're considering some best practices, in particular Summit. The city of Summit does this very well. And what that is, is basically, as folks are using the fields, the recreation space, a portion of the money for registration goes into a fund, which is then used for maintenance. So that's probably the direction we're going to be going in. Moving on to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, several times it's come up, and President Torpey mentioned that one of the things, really, the mission of this, of the committee is, one of the major things is around promotion, and how do we position ourselves, brand ourselves to, not only internally, but the larger community around us. And some of you may have noticed, this past Sunday, Maplewood, in the New York Times Real Estate section, had a very nice article, and obviously, they espoused all the things that make Maplewood great. And we in South Orange, you know, that article could very likely have been about us as well, but that's one of the important things we're trying to do, is figure out who we are, why do people come to these towns vis-à-vis other surrounding towns? And the committee is considering that. One of those ways to do it is through large events, and that's just a big promotional thing. So again, probably every trustee has weighed in on, but what a tremendous success the Irvington Avenue Food Truck and Beer Garden Fest was. Well, it, to me, it demonstrates a great example of the interest and demand for those types of events in our village. And I don't know if we were able to capture, trustee Callum, if we were able to know what percentage of the visitors came from actually our town or Maplewood or other locations, but I suspect we're bringing people in who are not necessarily just from our village, who are, you know, excited by what we have to offer. And there's a couple of other things that have come up in this same vein, in particular with regard to musical events, other types of concerts. Folks at SOPAC are talking about this. Also, the Village Center Alliance is having conversations with music groups in town to talk about what would it be like to have more frequent events like this? And do we combine it with food trucks or other dining experiences? What, again, is something that our residents and the local folks would like to participate in? And so these are the things we're exploring. I think it's just incredibly exciting. I think what we're going to see is, we've seen an inflection change in terms of the energy and what folks, when they came out on Friday night for Irvington Avenue, I just thought there was this great- thought there was this great sense of energy. And that's something we want to not only capture, but continue to do. And then, one other topic, again, that President Torpey mentioned, was this idea of incubator and what other folks, where is there more of a demand from residents? And the Baird has actually been, and I'm not sure if we talk about that traditionally or, or as a means of an incubator, but the truth is, the Baird has served in that role. So, whether it's in the role of new classes, there's arts classes there, there are martial arts classes, and what has happened is several different instructors have had several classes and then moved on, once they've seen it was successful, and it built up a, a sense of engaged community, they've then moved on and opened up their own shops. So, I think there is definitely a precedent for that in our village and an opportunity for us to expand upon that. The technology space is one that we haven't really explored a whole lot here, but I have a sense that there would be a demand for that. And whether, and that's one of the reasons we're doing these meetups, that's more media-oriented, but I'd like to see us explore that also in the tech space. And that's some of the projects we're doing with Seton Hall and beyond. So, I think there's a lot of excitement, and I look forward to the future.
Great. Thank you. Trustee Levison had an item about the speed limits and the...
Yep. I noticed that recently, the county put up new speed limit signs on South Orange Avenue, and that being 30 miles an hour. I think for our central business, that speed is somewhat high, and I would propose to look at a lower limit, such as 25. If you're going 30 miles an hour and try to stop for somebody walking through a crosswalk, it will be virtually impossible to stop.
Is that specifically, is that specifically a business corridor speed, as opposed to through the S-curves, it would be something different?
Well, coming down the hill, it's 40, or going up the hill, it's 40.
Are you talking all streets in the central business?
No, just South Orange Avenue.
That we ask the county to change it to 25 from something like Ridgewood to Scotland?
Correct.
Okay. I can support that.
I'd be in on that one as well. I, I almost don't see how you could drive 35 miles an hour on South Orange Avenue through our downtown, just because of the lights.
It's 30.
Yeah, well, I just don't see how you...
I would imagine at night, you could do it.
I think, to some degree, our town, the structure of the street itself kind of forces you to slow down, which is the desired effect. But, yeah, I would definitely be behind...
We moved Valley to 25 also. I was kind of surprised to hear 30, because I know coming down South Orange Avenue, you can go 30, I go 30. Actually, I normally always go 5 under the speed limit. But once you get into the actual CBD, it's, I've never, I can't see somebody being able to go that speed, unless it really is at night. Because all throughout the day, it's generally lots of lights, and there's a lot of, there's not a lot of spacing between the lights.
You know, if the new signs were, did they raise the speed limit, or it's always been 30, they're never any sign?
I don't know. I just saw them appear.
So, do you want me to just write a letter to them, saying that I've got support of the governing body, that we'd like 25, and we want it from Ridgewood to Prospect?
Further. To Ward?
After Grove Park? Yeah, to Ward?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Well, can we do the same thing that, the process that we went through for Valley?
They asked for us to do a resolution, and then they, and then hopefully, they would make the adjustments.
So, can we, can we just get a resolution for the next meeting that just mirrors...
What we do with Valley?
Yeah.
The other is that I don't know if the signs have been changed on Valley, or if the county has responded to our request to make it 25. I think the signs still say 30.
Do they? We did that a while ago. That was over a year ago, when Maplewood did it. We sent a resolution onto the county. Yeah, I know. Time flies. It was definitely a year ago. And it was at the same time that Maplewood was looking at their section of Valley. And then, we passed a resolution here, and so, both Maplewood and South Orange.
We should just verify if that's now been put to 25.
Mr. Lewis, can we do that?
What's that?
Confirm with the county that they've changed our...
Yeah, we'll look and find out where that stands, and if they changed it.
Well, they changed Maplewood, so I'd be surprised if they didn't change ours at the same time, I would hope. Block, two blocks next door.
Okay. So, we will look into that and then prepare a resolution for the next meeting for South Orange. Is there anybody from the Public Issues to comment?
I'm gonna wake them up.
Okay. And then, unless there is any new business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I don't move.
Oh, everybody's moving here. Moved by trustee Calm, seconded by trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
They oppose?
She doesn't, didn't say anything.
I'm not voting for anything.
Really?
He's still giving me motion.